Supervisors and school board members. Ten minutes after five o'clock, and some of us do want to go to a graduation after the work session this evening, so let me call this work session, work session of strategic planning to order. And I would like first, you know, recognize and thank Chairman Blova, Chairman of the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, and also Supervisor McKay, Representative Lee, District on Board of Supervisors, to join us this evening. I'm expecting Kathy Otgens from Hunter Mill District and Pat Harry from Spring Beach to join us soon. Our scheduled time for tonight's work session is pretty tight. We are hoping to wrap up all the discussion. I'm not talking about entire presentation, but at least a discussion involving supervisors by six o'clock, if that can be done. So I know that we have a 24 slides for the presentation, and I understand that you are going to go through the first seven slides first, and we'll get to the discussion. And at that point, we'll probably have a discussion for about 45 minutes, and those who need to leave at that point could leave, and then both members could continue on a continued discussion and the presentation with for the rest of the slides. That, again, I want to thank supervisors for joining us. The school system, the school board has been working on the strategic planning for several months, especially with, you know, assistance from very able consultants, you know, Dr. Dr. Dimitro and Gina Semenek with ACR, with a, let me turn the whole thing over to Dr. Dimitro.
Thank you, Mr. Moon, and welcome to the Board of Supervisors members and Chairman Blova. As, they're going to move that slide presentation, as Il Young has shared, that we're going to share just a little bit of brief background information, just to bring everybody up to speed, so we're at the same place, and then really engage in the conversation between the Board of Supervisors members and the school board members about needs moving forward. So we talked a little bit about the agenda of where the process, we're going to talk about where the process is, the conversation, and then after we have that conversation, we will share some preliminary findings with the school board about some of the emerging themes that are coming out of the initial data. Everyone's welcome to stay and listen to that, and if you're able to remain, you're certainly welcome to do that. But this is still an evolutionary process that will be finalized with the full findings being presented in July. Just, just so that everyone's on the same page, Fairfax County Public Schools has been using the Strategic Governance Manual for the last seven years, from 2006 through 2013, and you're still continuing to use it. You had your three defined academic goals, which were expanded into a great amount of detail beyond just the general goals. But if you look at those three goals, in the fall of this past school year, you took those goals and the expectations of your community, and under Dr. Garza's leadership, talked about the portrait of an FCPS graduate. And you translated those student achievement goals into what a student graduating from your system should look like and be capable of doing. And since that time, we've been using both of those pieces of information, along with the information that we have collected, to define what the strategic plan needs to look like to accomplish those academic goals, and to ensure that you are producing students that are capable of doing the things you've defined for your graduates. I created this slide. This is not an FCPS document, but I wanted to have people see the connection between your original three academic achievement goals, which has been part of strategic governance, and the portrait of the graduate, because they're not two separate entities. They're not, you did one thing for a while, and now you're doing something else. It's been an evolutionary process of saying, what is it that the school system needs to be doing to ensure that children can be as successful as possible? So when you take a quick glance at this slide, and there's a lot of overlap in terms of academic goal with areas of the portrait of the graduate, but I identified the places that the academic goal number one, related to the portrait of the graduate characteristics, goal number two, and goal number three, so that you can see the connection between those two approaches. And you have a copy of this, and it, I'm sure it needs work in terms of the FCPS interpretation of it, but I think it's important to know that there is a really tight relationship between those two approaches. Gina's going to take just a few minutes to talk about where the process is at, and then we're going to start the discussion.
So many of you have seen this slide, and it's really a visual representation of the process.
Did you use a microphone?
Thank you. Sorry. Many of you have seen this slide, and it's a visual representation of the process for the strategic plan. Today, we are going to start by sharing some of the emerging themes throughout the research phase, which was Phase One. And what you'll see, if you look down on the right, as we transition through the summer, working with the school board on the goals and the objectives, eventually then it transitions off to the administration, where they'll, they'll become more involved in the building level administrators in terms of really identifying, you know, the implementations, the action plans, how will we make this, you know, really come to life? So Phase One, as I said, was all about conducting research, but just to give you an idea of the level of engagement, this process began in March with individual board member interviews and the superintendent interviews. Subsequent to that, we came out and conducted several focus groups that engaged 851 stakeholders, and we did that across all the clusters and then deep within the clusters, so that all stakeholder groups were represented. We spoke to students, to parents, to the teachers and staff and administrators, to community members, to really get a feel for what people valued, what was important to them, what their perspectives were, what their, their opinions and thoughts were about a variety of school-related topics. There's no strategic plan without reviewing the mission, vision, and beliefs, of course, because that sort of sits at the helm. That's part of the process, so we're currently doing that as well, and that will be part of an ongoing discussion in July. We also reviewed a number of archival reports and lots of data, because this, this system has done a lot of research over the years, and a lot of it's very relevant, so we are currently in the process of integrating that, along with what we collected as primary research, integrating what other firms and what you have done yourself to make sure that it is all utilized. We administered a survey online to stakeholders. It does break down the population there, 1,673 students, 8,290 parents, 7,315 employees, and 11,172 community members. So there's over 28,000 stakeholders that completed surveys. We are also in the process of analyzing student achievement data. We're doing that at the school and cluster level to take a look, not just at the status, your report card, your state report card, we are looking at that as well, but also at growth. So looking at not just a percentage of kids that are, are meeting or proficiency levels, but what's the growth look like from one year to another? So Phase Two is where we're at now. We are about to present some of the emerging themes, and then in July, the school board is going to have to roll up their sleeves, it's going to be a lot of work, and Hank and I will be back to go through all of that evidence. It's going to be a very detailed evidence document that really will show the analyses throughout, and the item level analyses of the survey and such, and work through, what does it mean? So we're integrating that for you, and I, I know that you're going to appreciate that, rather than us bringing you a bunch of raw data, giving you an idea of the focus groups that we've spent several weeks coding. That's a very disciplined process, so the way we collect data is very disciplined. We have trained qualitative researchers that understand how to properly collect that, analyzing it. Every focus group transcript was analyzed by two independent raters. A third rater would resolve any discrepancy, so it's a very disciplined approach. And the, I think the biggest message there is its objective. You know, Hank or I or ACR group, we don't have a stake in the outcome of this, so that's important, because for us to be able to stand back and give you a very objective view of where your stakeholders really see things is valuable. And I, I know that you understand that, or you wouldn't have engaged with us. I think that's it. In July is where we're going to bring the draft plan and the document, and that's where the real work begins then for the board, and your role is going to be to go through that and to really gain consensus and agreement. We're going to be looking for you to commit to a limited number of strategic goals and focus, and, and, you know, given the goals that you agree to, what objectives make sense, and then trust your administrators and your experts to figure out how to get it done. So your role is to set the strategy, the vision, identify what those goals are, and then the skilled experts have to get involved to figure out how to get that done, and we'll help facilitate that.
Okay. Well, one of the things that we'd like to do is we add to this data information before we start sharing some of the emerging themes, is to really hear from the Board of Supervisors and from the school board members as to, really, your thoughts about what do you believe are the critical issues that need to be addressed for the Fairfax County Public Schools to be the very best that they can? And secondly, what are the opportunities that you see moving forward for the county and the school division to work together in common efforts? And this is really the discussion piece of this. This is, and we're, we're really looking for the input from the Board of Supervisors and the thoughts from the school board members as you have this dialogue as to what it will take to maintain the outstanding reputation that Fairfax County Public Schools already has, and to continue to enhance that. So I'm going to shift it to Sharon and Jeff.
Okay. Before I actually let Chairman Blova have a first chance to say anything about this, let me recognize a young man from Centover, a Boy Scout working toward to becoming an Eagle Scout, from Troom Number 30, currently going to Westfield High School, Mr. Cor Sors. Would you like to stand to be recognized? Thanks for joining us this evening. With that, Chairman Blova.
Thank you, Il Young. And let, let me just first say that I hope you have the opportunity to review the joint Board of Supervisors/School Board retreat that we had, what was it, about a year and a half or so ago? Because we, you know, our, our discussion was on this very topic, what are the priorities of, you know, the Fairfax County schools? What are the priorities of the Board of Supervisors? Where are places where we intersect? And what are things that we can, can do together in a stronger way, in a better way? It was a, it was a really, I think, interesting discussion, and it, you know, that, that report and all of that can be found and can be reviewed, and I hope that you use that, and I hope that you incorporate it into your study. One of the things that we talked about at the, at the very beginning, we had a, we had a presentation by Dana Kaufman. Dana Kaufman is, is with Northern Virginia Community College, and he gave kind of a riveting presentation about the workforce that we're going to be needing, the fact that, you know, the, the boomer generation is aging, will be leaving the workforce, the fact that we are attracting industry to Fairfax County, and that there is a need, especially in the areas of technology and STEM, also medical research and technology. So there, you know, there, you know, these are areas that, you know, we are, we are targeting. And when he looks ahead, and when we looked ahead, we were concerned that that, the workforce needed to fill those jobs may not be there. You know, so, you know, the students that we have within our public school system, many of them may not have a culture for higher education, or, you know, or, you know, may, you know, may have a need for, for, you know, a different educational path, or stronger educational preparation. So the concern was that, you know, we, we will have jobs if there is the workforce to fill them. Some of the other, some of the other issues that, that we've discussed and that we're concerned about, one of our priorities is early childhood education, and that's something that our board has discussed with the, with the school board, something that we're committed to. I think the schools are committed to that as well. We have, and yet we've just finished funding and being able to implement all-day kindergarten. So also being able to make available to young people and families who need it, early childhood education at a, at an earlier level than kindergarten is something we would like to be able to offer, and this really goes to the early, you know, the, what I talked about earlier, preparing children to, you know, to be good students and to, to learn in our school system. The earlier we can prepare kids, the better. And, and, you know, and so, so early childhood education. Also inequity or disproportionality with students and their, the experience in, for instance, the, the justice community, where kids are falling through the cracks, and we're concerned about that. They, you know, they're, that becomes a problem for the county and for the, for the juvenile justice system, and in fact, you know, for the human services system. When kids are struggling and when kids have issues, behavioral issues, mental health issues, that we are addressing those things jointly with the Board of Supervisors and the school board together. This is a holistic need, that we need to address those things in order to, to meet the needs of our students, and then to meet the needs of, of our families. And I think I will stop there and see if other members of the board, let's see, Jeff is here, is anyone else here from the Board of Supervisors? So Jeff, you're at next.
Well, first, let me thank you all for having us here today and for doing this, undertaking the strategic plan. I think it's, it's very important on multiple levels, but particularly from a parent's standpoint, I think many of our parents don't necessarily look at the whole picture of our schools. They're kind of in their own lane, and they don't really see where we're going as a school system and what our goals are. They know the goals for their individual child, but maybe not for the whole system. And I think this is a, a good way to put down in writing what, what those priorities are. And I think you'll find our board and the school board are probably in, in total agreement on the priorities piece. I think the difference is, is in how you, maybe how you decide to implement those things, but I think we probably share most of the same priorities. And, you know, I do think that how the strategic plan gets implemented is a really important piece of this, and I know that, that, you know, we're way ahead of having that discussion, but, you know, in, in my experience, good strategic plans are ones that are living documents, where you can tie back all the initiatives that you're doing to the goals that are in the strategic plan, to make sure that you're tracking and doing the things that your strategic plans say. And sometimes we can get out of, out of that process in our day-to-day routine. And so I think check backs on that, and then also a living, breathing document that can always be amended, because one of the things that will continue to make our schools great is our ability to pivot into what the latest technologies or trends or best practices are. And so, and I think how we implement that and how we monitor it and tie back the initiatives that we're involved in become really important. In terms of, you know, the priorities that I have, they're almost exactly the same as what you just heard from the chairman. I mean, I do think there are great opportunities for collaboration in the human services area, and I have significant concerns, as I know probably everybody in the room does, with some of the mental health issues that we're seeing in some of our schools, with the enormous poverty that exists in some of our schools, and whether the county and schools are working collaboratively enough on solving some of the challenges that come with those, with those demographic issues in particular. There was a article in the paper, one of the local papers today, talking about poverty that I, you know, don't agree with a lot of the things that were said in it, but the premise, I think, is one that we need to address, which is, are our schools in poverty getting the kind of resources and the kind of attention that our Fairfax County Public Schools deservedly get across the board? And I do think, and I'm not sure if the data will show that or not, because while there may have been 28,000 surveys, you know, it's kind of hard to tell whether that's a representative number demographically and economically of what, what today's county is. And so I do have some concerns about that long-term, and I know it's not a concern that only I have. I think probably everybody on the board does. The question is how you tackle that. So the disproportionality issue, the equity issue, I think is a real one, and I think it gets more acute as we see major demographic shifts in the county that we're not used to, you know, that are still new. A lot of our residents aren't used to them, they're seeing them for the first time. Some parts of the county have had these demographic trends for a long time, other parts, this is a new thing. And how we respond to those, I think, is going to chart the course for how successful the reputation is of the Fairfax County Public Schools long-term. On the collaboration issue, you know, several people in here have served on joint committees of our board. We've seen some recent collaboration on capital facilities. I think maintaining our capital facilities and investing in them is a major issue that, you know, I hope we continue to address jointly. We need to be creative about the facilities we have and the growth that we know is coming. Some of our areas just can't sustain the amount of growth that we're seeing without major capital facilities investments, and I think that has to be a shared responsibility. I mentioned human services. Sharon mentioned pre-K, I think presents an enormous opportunity for our boards to work together on addressing a really important issue in the county. And so, you know, I'm really interested in seeing kind of the survey results. I'm also really interested in hearing kind of what the long-term schedule is. This is, you know, it's, it's an ambitious agenda. Obviously, there's a lot of data here. The July 14th discussion further with the school board and making the draft plan available, you know, I'm kind of interested in hearing, once the draft plan is available, how you see the process working from that point moving forward? What are the other intersections of input from the community and other stakeholders as we go through that? And that, I'll leave with just that question, because that's a question in my mind.
We're, we're, we fully intend to share any and all the information with supervisors, and if you have any question along the way, just to ask us, we'll forward it to Dr. Dimitro to respond, properly respond to those as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Chairman, and I know that would be the case. What I'm asking, let me ask it a different way, is when do you see the, the process ending? I mean, at what point in time do you think you have, what is the goal for when you might have a strategic plan?
Timeline-wise?
Right.
Dr. Dimitro.
The intention is to have a rather in-depth conversation around the data that comes back, which will be shared with the board right around the end of the first week of July, so that they have a week, 10 days, to digest it before they have a discussion about the data itself on the 18th and the 19th of July, and to begin work based on that information, on what they see are the strategic goals emerging out of that information of what's been collected so far. So hopefully, some notion of the priorities will emerge out of that. It's a little hard to tell exactly how long that discussion will take, because one of the things that's important is that the board commits to what those priorities are. And so it may take more than just that discussion on the 18th and 19th to finalize what those priorities are. But once the strategic goals and directions are established, hopefully this summer into the very early part of the fall, it needs to be translated into action plans. And so, for instance, if one of the major strategies is to look at facility kinds of needs for their future planning, well, what does that translate into what needs to be done over the next three months, six months, nine months, five years, to have that process work smoothly? So I would imagine sometime very late summer to early fall, there'll be a draft plan that can be circulated to gather additional feedback and information from community members, staff members, as the board processes that. But ultimately, it's going to come down to some choices around priorities. Because one of the things that I think all public institutions struggle with, you as a Board of Supervisors for County Services, the school board, is there are more needs and demands to be met than the resources that are totally available.
We know that.
And it's, it's the notion of public service, it's the notion of, of how you make those choices. And in the last five years, for most organizations that provide those kinds of services, those things have become all the more difficult, not easier. So working through that kind of conversation and really determine what are the priorities for this particular county moving forward from a school system perspective, from an overall quality of life perspective, will help that process gain some momentum and some, some traction as to the ability to say no sometimes when you have to say no. I think you were going to say something.
Yeah. In a, in a perfect world, this is how it would work, or the facilities part, anyway. And a, a previous effort between the Board of Supervisors and the school board was a Smart Savings Task Force, and it, and Dan Stork and I chaired that effort. It was, it also was three and three, three board members, three members of the school board, and three members of the Board of Supervisors. And, you know, and the idea was to find opportunities for where we could do things together or collaborate, rather than doing things separately. And in a perfect world, if we could somehow blend our CIP, so that if the county knew that it needed a library, for instance, in the Bailey's Crossroads area, and the schools knew that they needed a school and classroom space, that we could save money and be more efficient by building something that could be used for both things. That would be a perfect world, if, if we could somehow blend our CIP and our thinking together as to our facilities and how we pay for them and how we use those things. There was something else that, that I also wanted to, to say. Earlier this week, I had a, I had a program, and Il Young Moon was present, participated, and so was Ryan McElvein, and it was about the, the workforce, the workforce of the future. And we took a look back at the evolution of the workforce. We were a farming community in Fairfax County, what we are now, and then into the future. One of our speakers, his name was Egan Ryder, and he is with, with Northern Virginia Community College. And he, he, something he said struck a chord, and he was talking about, you know, if, if he could wave a magic wand and change the educational curricula, that, that we should try to couch things more in, when, when we're working with students, about where, what kind of career or what kind of path something could lead you to, so that when you're taking a course in math or taking a course in, you know, whatever, that, that you start to get a student's, I guess, mind around, why is this relevant, and where could this lead me? It was, it was kind of an interesting comment. It was just, you know, sort of an aside, but, but it really struck a chord with me, and I thought that that was kind of important when, when you're trying to prepare young people, especially in the case of young people who may not have, you know, again, a, a higher education culture, into thinking in terms of, why should this be important to me? You know, why, you know, why should I, you know, why is math that important? Where, what are career paths that this could lead to? So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment. I thought it was, it was really important to hear that.
By the way, before we call on Mrs. Smith, I think I had Ms. Heinz and Mrs. McLachlan, and then I'll call, I'll go to Mrs. Smith.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both so much for joining us today. This is, this is exciting, I think. You know, we're, we're planning strategically, and we know that we want to work with you guys on that. So I'm trying to answer quickly the questions that we've been asked. I, I think the things that are critical issues are our achievement gaps, and you touched on that, you know, and that gets to the early ed questions and disproportionality in general across the system. Also, improving, I think one of our goals in the Portrait of a Graduate is to improve our measures, you know, how, what we're testing kids, and the, the data that we send out to the community, which includes you all, has been based on state tests, which, you know, more and more people don't have a lot of faith in. So that's one of the points of doing the Portrait of a Graduate, is to say, okay, these are the goals we have for our kids, so we're going to be measuring those things because we value them. And it gets to that question of what the career world expects and what the college world expects. And then I think another, you know, goal for us is to make sure that we're attracting and maintaining and empowering the best educators. and maintaining and empowering the best educators in the region. So, that's something else that I think is critical for us. I love the idea of the blended CIP, because one of my first things for the second question there was co-locating more. I think there's just so many natural opportunities. And I know that's the perfect world, but I think we should go ahead and shoot for it, right? And then, also, building support in the community for the schools. I think that's a partnership kind of an opportunity for us, you know. And we've been trying very hard the last couple of years to get out there and make sure that everyone who supports the schools is doing that out loud, you know, and really knows what's going on. And that you guys have started the conversation on the meals tax, I think is great, because I think part of building support in the community is showing that we're willing to at least try to diversify the funding stream, and, you know, we're not always going after the same people all the time. And then I wanted to just get back a little bit to diversity. And this is the last point I would make, is diversifying our communities. And that Connection article, I looked at it too. And the title was that poverty is scattered across the county, and the truth is, it's not scattered. It's concentrated, right? And that is something that the school system kind of inherits, in a way, because we don't create school-sized pockets of poverty and school-sized pockets of wealth. We inherit them. And so, I think, I mean, I would like to see us, I think this is an opportunity for pretty high-level collaboration. When we think about how the county has developed, you know, you look at REST and an offer of REST, and so I'm going to sing its praises for a minute. It is a community that purposely planned for socioeconomic diversity. And that is really good for the schools. Having high concentrations of poverty, you know, up to upwards of 90% in some schools is really not good for the schools. And almost, no matter, research tells us, no matter how much, how many resources we put into that, we're not going to do as well for those kids as we would if we could spread, spread that out a little bit, you know, and have a better mix in all of our schools. So, I don't know exactly how to approach that, but it sounds like a planning thing and a housing planning kind of a thing, where we would definitely need to work with the county on that. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you again for coming.
Okay. I have Mrs. McLachlin to be followed by Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Strauss, Mrs. Schur, and Mr. Nacofax. Mrs. McLachlin.
So, I...
We have Supervisor Harry joining us. Thank you. Thanks for joining us.
And listening to my colleague Ms. Hines, I think it very much echoes what both Chairman Boliva and Supervisor McKay have already stated. When you look at actually where we are on our goals, I think we're all actually identifying the very key areas that as a county, we must address together. We can't do them separately. And when I think about the fact that we brought together the two boards through the SKIPP task force, you know, that's Successful Children and Youth, trying to look at that disproportionality, trying to also look at the issues like early education, but also looking at then how are children successful as they come through the system, and then the human services component. But one thing that I would like for all of us to be thinking about is, when we look at the model of the Synthetic Turf Task Force, and how, when we came out of that shared task force together, there was actual concrete plan. It was, here's how we're going to financially commit together. And, and the group brought the recommendation to all of you and to our board, and thankfully, we were in agreement. And for the public, what that said was, okay, you can speak to, philosophically, you share the goal, but then, what are those steps? And so, I think, in my mind, when I've listened to the public watch us from the outside, early childhood education is very much a priority. Chairman Boliva mentioned, you know, full-day kindergarten. That was another example of where we kept talking about it, that we all believed in it, but what did we finally do? We committed money to it. And my understanding was, with early childhood education, it's been described that there's a five-year plan. But I think what the public's sort of looking at us next, and what I'm hoping the SKIPP program or the SKIPP group will come forward and say is, here's some specific action steps. So, it's not just that we all agree it's an issue or that we're all committed to it, but where do we really, as the two boards, come down and say, okay, here's, here's where we're going to actually put our money? And I think that's where the public ends up saying, oh, you really did take action. And while I'm really proud of the work we did on the Synthetic Turf Task Force, we did take a little bit of a hit from the community, saying, wow, so you delivered, you know, athletic fields, but what about all the other things? So, I think we're at a really good juncture to say, you know, look, this was one of the easy ones that we could, to address, and it really did help our communities as a whole, not just our schools, but our youth and adults. And we know physical education and athletic recreation activity is so important to the whole person. But those are the things that were sort of weighing on my mind. I'm not going to repeat what the three of you already said. I think we're in full agreement. Those are probably the big key flags that we can identify and say, we've got to do collaborative work together. I will hope that my colleague Ms. Evans might speak a little bit to bringing up the Bailey's issue, because that was one of the things that we were struggling with from our side on the board, is trying to understand this opportunity to have those co-location of services. It is a national model to do that, and I think we lost that opportunity. So, maybe, again, when we look at the shared boards, that's a key area when we look at best practices and that moving toward this urban suburban model that we're sort of molding into, we got to do. The one last thing I'll just want, I want to emphasize, because it came out of our retreat 18 months ago, the Northern Virginia Community College Board gets very concerned about the remediation numbers that they see. And I just, I pulled up the information that was most recent that we got from our budget staff. I guess it was in the FY 2014 response. But what's important to note is about 26% of our graduates go on to NOVA that we track. And of that percent, it's anywhere from 20% to 40% may need remediation. So, what that means is really, we're talking about 5% to 10% of Fairfax County graduates might need remediation. And I think that's a key piece, because what keeps being presented is, do you realize 50% of your students enrolling in NOVA are needing remediation? And I think the numbers are one piece that have to be sorted out a little more clearly. But I, I think we don't want to lose sight of the fact that our graduates on the whole are extremely successful.
Could I, could I just make a comment on, on that last point? It would be interesting to drill down even further and see of that percentage, when those students entered our school system, were they recent? Did they recently come to us, maybe from some other country, and, and then wind up graduating and needing, continuing to need help once they got into, into community college?
I fully agree, because we want to make sure we're addressing the right problem. And you can't have the best solution if you don't know the exact problem. So, I completely agree.
Many of those students are recent arrivals to this country. So, we need to get that. So, let me do this. I have Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Strauss, and Mrs. Schur, and Mr. Nacofax. I want to wrap up all the discussion by 10 minutes after 6:00, which means we have about 22 minutes left. Since we don't always get to see Supervisor Harry and hear from him at our meeting, Supervisor Harry, you can jump in anytime you are ready to, and I'm going to call on Supervisor Harry.
Real quick on that, on that point, it'd be interesting also to see the percentages at the other schools, because, you know, the problem, the NOVA problems mentioned a lot, but...
Supervisor Harry, would you like to use the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it on or not on? It's on, okay. What I was saying is, the NOVA problem is brought up a lot of times, but it'd be interesting, in addition to what you were saying, is also reach out and get it from the other schools in their remediation numbers, because I know there are issues at some of the other schools, not just with Fairfax County graduates, but graduates from out throughout.
Other schools, you said, okay.
Just, just one comment on that. First, I think Sharon's exactly right. You know, knowing when they came to our system helps identify the challenge. But the other piece ties back to what we talked about earlier, about kind of career paths for kids. Because how many of those kids ended up at NOVA because there wasn't really another obvious alternative, and they thought the only way they would be successful was to go get a college education, whereas if they were on some other technical path that fed them into a industry, into an occupation, that, you know, they were prepared for, they might not have run into that issue either. And so, I think, you know, drilling down on what's going on there becomes really important. A lot of people look at that as a failure of the school system. There's a lot of other issues involved that we need to identify. We can't just assume that all of those kids meant to end up at NOVA. What else could they have done, I think, becomes a really important question about the product and the portrait of the graduate.
Okay. Dr. Wajah.
Yes. Very important points. Real quickly on remediation or developmental courses, that's real complex. So, we could spend a lot of time just talking about that, but I won't go there today, because every college/university has their own standard, can set their own standard, uses different assessments. So, it's really difficult to tease out really what, what that's about. And, and we visit a lot with NOVA, and we have some plans. But on the career and technology education and the career pathways, this board and their legislative program last year, and I think as we move forward to developing next year's legislative plan and program, a lot of the challenges we have around career and technology education are really outside of our control as it relates to graduation standards. And we've talked a lot about, we have a one-size-fits-all in the Commonwealth. And so, I think there's a real opportunity, because, you know, we've talked about coordinating on legislative programming. So, if you all, you know, we feel like we could develop some models that are still, still very rigorous, that are tied to workforce needs. And we've begun contemplating that, but we would appreciate your support, because there are so many requirements that a lot of these great courses are just squeezed out of the system.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Smith to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. You know, it's funny. Sometimes you go do something earlier in the day, and it fits in with what you're doing now. I was at Franklin Middle School at 8:00 this morning, meeting with the counseling department. And we do have such a focus now, and some of this came from the state and some of what we're doing, on getting kids to understand the connections between the courses they take and career pathways. And that's one of the things they were sharing at Franklin, how we have a program called Navions, and the kids can go in and look at the courses in the high school. And they're trying to talk to them about career paths and what you do. So, it's definitely a focus of the system, and, and it helps. We want to get away from just SOL tests. We want to get to project-based learning, engaging kids in real-life problems. And I think we have to see where there are synergies. You know, what, what can we use with businesses more and in the county to get kids involved in real-life problems when we do this? So, I think that could be another area where we could have some synergies to do that work. I have to jump on with what Pat was saying about the zoning issues and how the housing is. And I don't know what can be done, but it does create difficulties. And I, you know, it's hard for our employees to live here. I look at my own son trying to find a house, and I don't know how we deal with those issues, because that affects our community and who's living here, and, and the schools in that. So, I don't know where there's connections in that piece. So, I think it's good we're having conversations together, because we want to ensure that we keep a vibrant school system that has high expectations for students in our changing face of what we're providing in the county. And I think it will be important for us to work together to do that. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss.
First of all, thank you all very much for coming and joining us today. We were, when we began this process, one of the first, one of our first objectives was to see if we could get members of the Board of Supervisors to come and, and chat with us about this, because we are, we all serve the same constituency. So, we are joined at the hip, absolutely. And speaking of that, one of the, one of the unusual strengths of this county is the fact that our school system is so large that we are serving, Mr. McKay, your children, and Ms. Boliva, we're serving your grandchildren. And we have to serve them extremely well. And, and Mr. Harity, your family, we have to serve those children very well, as well as the, the children who have just arrived from another country, children in poverty. And the advantage of such a large school system is that I think we can focus, I think, across that entire spectrum. Many school systems that are very small, if you're on one side of the track, you are going to cater to one group of children, because the other children aren't there. And on the other side of the track, they are struggling because there are no resources, there's no money, there's no nothing. And so, I think we have tremendous strength in the county. When we talk about preparing our children for the future, for college and workforce, et cetera, for us in the school system, obviously, we're held accountable for every child every day. The kids who are here right now, and we worry about their future. One of the things that I don't hear us talk about, and I guess this is a challenge, Hank, for you guys, we worry about preparing the workforce. We know that the companies that have come, they're concerned about the quality of education that children of their current employees will receive, and hopefully, excellent education. Then, we worry about our children who struggle, and we have a minority student achievement gap, poverty, et cetera, demographics that are very, very concerning to us. And the, so, it's, how many of our children, as we are trying to help all of these kids do extremely well, it'd be interesting to know how many of the children are actually, in our schools today, are actually going to be a part of the workforce? How many are going to go off to work in the hedge funds in New York, and we're going to lose them? Will we be able to bring them back? But since we work so hard, obviously, to serve all those children, which we must do, it would be very interesting as we plan and go forward. I don't know that anybody does much study of movement and bringing enticing, sort of, all of our kids back in. And there have been several studies. There was a New York Times study, a Brookings, and a Council on Foreign Relations that looked at mobility, non-mobility. And again, we're investing heavily in our children and our workforce, and we would like 10, 15, 20 years from now to benefit across the spectrum as we've prepared these kids for all the various jobs or careers. But I don't know, Hank, if you guys do much work on that, but that's been sort of the latest interesting study.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. I have Mrs. Schur to be followed by Mr. Nacofax, Mrs. Schur, and Ms. Evans, and Mr. Wajah. Mrs. Schur.
I'm going to try to be discreet to the questions that are up on, on the board, so that I kind of try to answer your questions, Hank. Looking at what the strategic issues are that have, I think, developed over time and have, I think, come to a great degree of clarity over multiple budget discussions with our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, and which continue to be at the center of each budget cycle and, you know, anecdotal conversations within the community or between the two boards. One is what the long-term, long-range demographics and population centers look like, and how we can strategically improve the county's identification of where population is coming from, and how they're going to be housed, schooled, transported, et cetera. Because if we don't have that right, everything else is wrong. If we don't have the long-term understanding of what the facility needs are, it doesn't matter if we have the amount of teachers wrong, or what their ESL population is, or how many buses we're going to need. Because if we don't have that number right to begin with, all, we're always going to be behind, which is basically where we are now. We are in a, in a nexus of the infrastructure crush of not having gotten the numbers right in the past. And so, whatever it is that has to happen collaboratively between the two boards to be more strategic about that, and, and that's strategic in the, I see in the mid and long range, you know, out-years, because that planning has to begin now. Not only do we have to address, you know, the pressing needs now, but we have to address the out-years. So, that's, that's the first. But the subgroup to that is also a shared approach, if you will, to, to that needier population that we've been talking about that's a lot of subtext, and how we bring not just students who are, and I forget the number of languages and the number of countries, because...
196.
Yep, that. 196 countries and, and all the languages that go with, that if we don't have a strategic plan as a county to have language skill acquisition in the English language for not only the students, but the parents as well, that continues to burden all of the wraparound services provided either through the school system, or if it's not through the school system, it's through the county. And so, there isn't a strategic approach, I see, for the delivery of English language acquisition and, and rapid acquisition. And so, that's, that's crucial, because what that does is, every time we... And so, that's crucial because what that does is, every time we get the numbers wrong to begin with, the ripple in the pond effect is really, you know, avalanche in nature because the more needy students that show up, the more we haven't acquired the facilities, the more we haven't planned for the English language acquisition, the more services we need to provide, both on the county side and the school side. So, you know, and the projection is that it's not getting better. So, that, to me, is an urgent and compelling thing that both county and the school system need to work together on. And then, the other is the notion of neighborhood schools with those wraparound services and bringing those services, you know, locally into schools to the greatest ability possible. And as Chairman Bolova, you know, sort of mentioned, is that strategic planning of where we're putting facilities, where we have people, and meeting the needs of the people there, instead of trying to figure out, because I see both the county and the school system perpetually in the, how do we find the people? How do we get to them? Well, the kids are all coming to school. And so, the wise use of the resources that we already have is, you know, incumbent upon us and not allowing that to languish. And then, the last thing is really a little bit more back on our colleague's side is, and it's a difficult subject, but it's one of those courageous conversations that needs to be had, which is housing, you know, do we, you know, do we want you guys to be the second-largest landlord in Fairfax County? And what does that mean? What are the long-term implications of that? And housing enforcement, tax policies, and what those implications are, not only on the county side of the budget and the county's delivery of services, but what that does in a linear fashion eventually to the school system. And, you know, whether it's students arriving, you know, from out of country and then needing remedial services through NOVA, and ultimately being subsidized through some kind of services there, or whether the services are met in the pre-K through 12. And if we don't address the first one, we can never get to the pre-K because if we don't get those facilities right, we're never addressing the pre-K. So, that's kind of, I try to be strategic in the delivery.
Okay. Supervisors, welcome to, you know, jump in at any time. Again, I'm going to wrap up the discussion by 10 minutes after six o'clock. I have a Mr. Narkofax to be followed by Mrs. Reed and Ms. Evans and Mr. Welkup, which means I'm going to have to limit each board member to two minutes. Mr. Narkofax.
I will yield my time to a supervisor if he would like. No? Because you said you wanted to chime in a little.
Well, I mean, you know, I think the issue of the housing piece is very complicated, but understand that it's an issue that extends beyond, you know, our capacity here. I mean, there's a lot of free-market issues, but there's also a business community who is squarely behind creating more affordable housing in the county. And I think the issue is not who's the landlord. I think the issue that you pointed out that's very real is where do we put this housing? And I've been saying that for a long time. The concentrations of affordable housing in the county are causing significant problems. And the need for affordable housing in some parts of the county is so high, and there is none. So, you know, I think we need a whole lot more affordable housing in the county to serve the workforce that we have in this county and cut down some of the challenges with development in the outer suburbs that create some of the sprawl and traffic problems that we have that our buses are sitting in every day and our parents are sitting in every day. But, we got to be strategic about where we put it. And I think that has a profound effect on our kids' ability to learn. If you're a low-income child, that doesn't mean you can't add a lot to a classroom, especially you can add a lot to a classroom where not everyone else is low-income. And so, we need to wrap our hands around the services, target them towards the populations where they are. But, I think our long-term housing issues are in more affordable housing in strategic places in the county so that every kid has a chance to learn. And we can't ignore the fact that we have a affordable housing problem, henceforth the problem with overcrowding, with the explosion of trailers at some of our lowest-income schools. That's because low-income people want to live in Fairfax County, and they don't have a lot of opportunities other places. They're doubling up, they're creating trailer problems at some of these schools. And so, I'm happy to have a very courageous, you know, discussion about that any time. It is an issue, but I think it's the dispersion of opportunities of housing for people that is at the center of it.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Me, right?
Your time has been yielded.
I'm not yielding it. I was just graciously offering him to comment because he looked at me.
Okay. I go to Mrs. Reed, and I'll come back to you. I go to Mrs. Reed next, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Narkofax.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Moon. I'll be very quick. Just adding to the discussion, and I think it's really been said, but in my view, we have to address the changing demographics and trends, and look at the numbers and needs, and come up with joint strategies to address those particular things. And along with that, try to identify what's our role versus yours? Where does our work stop and the counties begin? I think, or whether others, nonprofits, because right now, it seems like it's such a mixed bag. Nonprofits do pre-K, you do it, we do it, a lot of, you know, people do it. So, is that the best strategy, for example, for rolling out early ed when we have 1,000 people at the end of the day who are on a waiting list? So, that, to me, is an issue for what do we do and not do? And what's the new definition of public services? In other words, and I think we all agree, we don't have enough money to do everything we want to do. So, I think we need to have a discussion about what is the new definition of service in Fairfax County? And I do think that needs to be a joint discussion. Multi-year planning is something I think will help us as we go forward so that we have discussions that really are much more strategic in nature. And I wonder too, another thought I had about opportunities for collaboration, whether we might focus on certain areas that have unique problems. We all know that the one-size-doesn't-fit-all, but the Route 1 corridor, Bailey's, Tysons, are all areas that have very unique and, you know, pretty emerging but imminent challenges that I think really would require a bunch of us to work together. Right now, I think it's very fragmented. And so, that would be my other suggestion, that perhaps we identify some areas to work on.
Chairman.
On that point, that's, the very areas that you were just describing are also revitalization areas, places that we targeted, where we want to see revitalization, redevelopment happen. And so, where there are challenges, you know, there are opportunities. And so, you know, looking for ways to redevelop in a way that, you know, helps to resolve some of our capital needs and our programming needs as well. So, I just, you know, that's the way we should be thinking, and I agree with you.
Just one comment on that. I think it was mentioned earlier, our size being our advantage, just probably an example where our size is our disadvantage, and our one-size-fits-all is hard to work around. And we find this problem on the county side too, that we're so big, sometimes it's hard to be spry and break out of the mold and say, we're going to set different guidelines, different opportunities in certain areas of the county. It's tough. It's tough to do that. You don't want to create multiple school systems, but you've got to be spry and not let your size get in the way, a lot of times, of doing creative things that are targeted into certain areas.
Although, just as we're looking at revitalization areas, and we're looking at smaller bites of the need to revitalize and the needs to redevelop in Fairfax County, so we're essentially looking at smaller bite areas, that could be a way of making Fairfax County a smaller place to deal with some of those issues and not trying to do cookie-cutter all over the county, which may not fit, but being able to address things in some areas where we have both challenges and opportunities that we can work together to, you know, to resolve or to address.
If I could just follow up very quickly. The issue of the expanding immigrant population, maybe that's an area, we've alluded to it, I think, but looking at best practices, I know I've talked to Dr. Garza at one of our national conferences, they actually had an immigration center that was provided, where that's where people started. And they had, you know, certain services and indoctrination so that the schools weren't teaching, and then the county services weren't doing. And so, to me, that might be an opportunity because the trends are only going up. And as we've said all along, our population not only is increasing, but it's needier. So, to me, that says we can't do business the way we used to. And so, I love your word, opportunity. I think Chairman Bolova, that's a great way to look at it. But, to me, that, as Elizabeth Schultz said, I think that's one of, at the core of our challenges, is because our system is changing in terms of who's coming in our doors, and the fact that we can't do anything other than educate who comes in our doors.
At this point in time, I know that I have two more board members on my list, but since it is very close to being 10 minutes after six o'clock, there is at least one board member, one supervisor who needs to go to graduation, and I should let them go. But, before they go, I want to take a chairman's prerogative to recognize Chairman Bolova to make a statement on some of the things I think you and I talked about a little earlier this evening, and also your conversation with the superintendent. One of the major topics of our discussion, this board's discussion on Monday, is uniform school calendar, master schedule, and you had some conversation, you had some thoughts on that, if you could share with us.
As we're talking about joint priorities, and I think it's on, it's just not in my face, which it needs to be. I think, first of all, that we, you know, even though at budget time, that's a tense time for us all, and, but I think that the Board of Supervisors and the School Board has a good working relationship and has a track record of working together, and you can see some successes. Earlier, Megan mentioned the synthetic fields and looking at, you know, some of the joint things we've done together and some of the, you know, the capital infrastructure committee that we created and that resulted in some more flexibility. I had a conversation last night with Karen, Dr. Garza. We attended the Luther Jackson Middle School joint concert with the Fairfax Symphony. It was fantastic, and the kids were amazing. But, we also had a side conversation about one of the things that the schools would like to do, that the Board of Supervisors, I think, would be supportive of, and that is all-day kindergarten, rather, all-day Monday. And, you know, I would be interested in working with the School Board and with Dr. Garza, you know, to see how we can make that happen. I know that that's something that the School Board is discussing right now. It leads right into early childhood education and the school calendar, and giving kids the opportunity to have more time to be able to master their subjects and be in the school system, and for teachers to be able to have the planning time and the teaching time that they need. So, anyway, I wanted to just mention that. We had had that discussion. That's something that I would like for us to work together to see how we could make that happen and how we can make that a priority in funding. And, you know, maybe as we're getting closer to carryover, you know, if there's an opportunity at that time, especially if we know that there is a savings in the long-term to be achieved by going to a full-day Monday, let's talk and let's put that on our radar screen.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Welkup.
I am in violent agreement with Chairman Bolova that we need to solve this problem together and soon. The two number, the two, top two things I hear in the schools across my district are, one, teachers need more planning time, this accomplishes that, and, two, kids need more instructional time, especially in Title I schools who, at one point in time, had it. And after we went through the all-day kindergarten issue, understanding equitably you need to do this across the county, but our kids in Title I schools, project-opportunity schools, they desperately need more instructional time. And so, I think it solves way more problems than it creates. It's long overdue. I'm ecstatic to hear about it, and you will have my unwavering support to find a path to do it sooner rather than later.
Thank you so much.
Resources.
You know, when it comes to resources, I mean, this, not many times does someone come to you and say, we need additional resources for the two things you hear most about that are a challenge in our schools. I can't think of a better use of resources than to do this.
Again, we're going to have, School Board is going to have this discussion for the second time on Monday. That's the most important topic for the Monday discussion. As soon as that discussion is wrapped up, we will be reporting to the County Board of Supervisors with the request and all that information. And thank you so much for that, you know, Supervisor McKay and Mr. Stroh, to, thank for joining us. You are off to the key center graduation, and we'll have five more minutes of a discussion after you leave. So, I have, thank you. Ms. Evans and Mr. Welkup. Ms. Evans.
Well, thank you. And I do want to also welcome you to, you know, thank you for coming today, and I appreciate that comment, Chairman Bolova, in support of the Monday issue as well as the teacher planning time issue. You know, when I look at other issues that I think are critical for us, I think equity across the county is of primary concern as well, both in terms of programs that we offer and in terms of services. And I think others have touched on that, but I think that's something that we need to deal with. As we look with to revitalization, we need to make sure that we think about the schools that, particularly when it comes into overcrowded areas, what we're going to be doing, and coordinate on that. Facilities, of course, we did make headway on the IFC, we're going to continue on that, and that's also a critical issue. And lastly, you mentioned, last but not least, you mentioned mental health. I think we need to work on health issues, and this is going to be the year that we're going to finally create healthier schedules for our high school students. I appreciate your support, and the support of supervisors on that as well. And so, that's also an area where we can work together to make sure that that works for everybody.
And Mr. Welkup and Mr. Narkofax.
So, I'm going to answer the two questions really briefly and then follow with explanation. So, in terms of the critical issue, I think the phrase I would use is one I heard at the VSB A law conference last Friday, which is the resegregation of America, which is another way of saying some of the things that we've already been talking about. And in terms of the cooperation, I would say it's our responsibility and our, as elected officials, to steer a path that preserves and improves the quality of life in Fairfax County for everyone. When I was a teenager in the 60s, growing up in Ohio and visiting California, California was heaven on earth. But, when I was an adult in the 90s and deciding where to raise my children, I did raise them in heaven on earth. It's Fairfax County. But, my concern is, where is Fairfax County going to be in 20, 30 years? And my fear is that we're going to follow the path of California, which, in my view, you know, degraded. And so, I feel like we're at a tipping point, and there's a dystopian vision of the future where it's every man for himself, those who have the means have their kids in charter schools and private schools and get the education that they are able to achieve for their children, and the public schools end up with everybody else. And then, there's the utopian vision, on the other hand, where we all pull together, we recognize we're all in it together, we commit as a community to provide services for families and children that counteract poverty and, in fact, address the alleviation of poverty. So, what I'll sum up and say is, we're the decision-makers, and I think it's our responsibility to make choices that steer us in one direction or the other. And of course, I would prefer steering towards the utopian.
Mr. Narkofax, you're the last one. And then, I would ask if Supervisor has a final remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both for coming, and Mr. McKay, who's just left. I think when Hank asked the questions, what's the best way to work together and where can we find our synergies, I think what we're doing tonight is one of those very good opportunities. This is the first opportunity that we've, I believe, we've had. We've had board-to-board meetings mostly surrounding budget, or maybe one or two topical issues with presentations without a lot of dialogue. So, I think when we go forward, I love the idea of the Joint Task Force, but the board-to-board, and those are important, but the board-to-board dialogue on these issues is very, very important, particularly when we look at our priorities. And so, when you talk about where could we work together, I'm repeating what most of my colleagues say. Hopefully, I can get a little... my colleagues say, hopefully I can get a little different spin on some of it. But when you talk about the Portrait of a Graduate, that was our combined effort. We did talk to business leaders, community leaders and school leaders. What skill sets do we want these children to graduate with, and how do we work backwards in the curriculum to ensure that this happens? You know, what does the curriculum look like in third grade, sixth grade, middle school and high school? I would say, as I was an observer for the Portrait of the Graduate group, I do think a lot of it talked about college-ready skills, but many of us talked tonight about different career paths and CTE education and how that has to evolve as when we look at this and we look at the Portrait of a Graduate. So I think that was mentioned tonight. Early education, I think we're all on board with that, but again, we, and we do have the skip committee and there is a five-year plan, but I do think we need to be more aggressive in looking at that and how we can do that. Lots of people talked about, you know, the emerging populations, and I am concerned about the programmatic changes that need to occur to our system to truly address the challenge of these emerging populations, combined with the poverty issue and what they bring. We talked about housing patterns, you know, there's the tipping point studies, which we've all referenced, the tipping point where, you know, if a high school reaches 40% of poverty, the quality of education doesn't go down just for those children in poverty, but for the entire school because of the strains put on the system itself. And that's very, very important when you talk about, when you talk about the issue of where people live, where they can afford to live, and how the housing patterns are affecting what's in the schools. And, you know, this is a really sensitive topic, and I think a lot of people aren't comfortable talking about it, but if we're honest about it, this is going to be one of the great, this is going to have the greatest impact on our schools and our county as we go forward, because if you look at our kindergarten populations and what their needs are, 50% of our kindergarteners are, English language is their second language, and they're, I can't remember the poverty rate of those incoming.
Thirty-six percent.
Thirty-six percent. So it's high, a third, a little more than a third. So, and you know, when we talk about the critical needs, yes, it's cost and funding. And, you know, our board is a school board, we have to be measured and strategic, as Hank said, and we have to set priorities. We have to know that can't, it all can't be done at once, but I think what we have to do, we have to educate each other on, and listen to one another. And we really have to do this outside of budget conversations, because as you said, Sharon, it gets intense at that point in time. But so we really, truly have to understand what the benefits are if we choose to do it, what the costs are, and really what the potential consequences of not doing it are. And we need to do that throughout the year, not just put it on the plate for budget time. And I think the strategic initiative that we're undertaking and doing in conjunction with you is the perfect way to do that, and we need to continue the dialogue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Narcoff. Now let me ask supervisors for final comments. Supervisor Harry.
Are you sure you want me to talk?
Absolutely.
You learn a lot by listening, actually. So I've been, I've been doing a lot of listening and observing. I want to apologize for being late first. I wasn't sure I was going to be able to make it at all, and hopefully you got the word.
Oh, you don't need to apologize. Thanks for joining us.
You know, a lot of things have been talked about, obviously land use impact on schools. I think it's huge. I mean, I think that's one of the areas, if you talk about where we need to start working together, I think that is a big area. You know, we just had the conversation on, and you're echoing a point I made at our budget when we passed the budget. We need to be working budget throughout the year, not just when we are at odds with each other over what the number is. I mean, so I'm in 100% agreement, and some of you will be seeing more of me on that, I think, on the task force. You know, I heard a lot about, I mean, let me just go, I guess, just to sum it up a little bit, and I heard your point on being utopian and, you know, it's hard to be utopian when you're striving to be the best school system in the country, because that's not a utopian thought. We want to be the best school system in the world, in the nation at least, and I think we are, but it's hard to balance those things. So when you're, just to, just kind of leave you with that thought, I mean, when you average everything out, you're average, you're not, you're not the best. And we've got to, we've got to give everybody the opportunity to be the best that they can be. And we've got to strive to be the best school system in the country, and I'm fully on board with the, I'm fully on board with that.
Thank you. Chairman Bolova.
Let me just say thank you for this opportunity. I think this has been a really good discussion, and I agree that it's important that we continue to have opportunities to, you know, to discuss not just budget but other issues as well. This has been a good opportunity for us to, you know, really actually step away a little bit from the immediacy of budget and to look at the larger issue of how do we do things together? How do we plan together better? How do we, you know, choose our priorities in a way that we're both trying to sync our respective priorities and goals with each other? We all represent the same people. Our districts are, you know, we each represent the same number of folks, and so it's important that we make these opportunities available for us to, you know, to work together towards those things. So saying thank you, and I think that the strategic budgeting initiative is going to be good. It's going to be, you know, give us more time that we need out of the budget cycle to be looking at those things, but then to be looking at things like the CIP and our larger planning efforts. I also just want to say, we had some interesting discussion just now about housing, affordable housing, and I think we need to have a community discussion regarding housing. And we hear that from the business community, we hear that about the need for workforce housing, we hear that from the schools and the need for housing that is affordable to our teachers, to our public safety folks, but also we need to make sure that we're not concentrating housing in a way that makes it difficult for us to educate kids. And so that's, I think, a discussion that we need to have, and I would like to make that happen, so watch that space. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much again. Thank you for, thank you for joining us this evening. We need to do this more often, and I will try to find a way to accommodate that. And as far as this strategic planning is concerned, as you know, that we are in the middle of this process, we'll provide you with as much updated information as possible and seek further input from supervisors. And thank you again. We will dismiss you and continue with our own discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now they're going to talk about us.
You are very smart.
We're on camera, don't worry.
Okay, Dr. Mitchell, I know that we have rest of the slide, the presentation. You think you can do that in 15 minutes?
I think so.
Okay.
I think we can, and I will not be offended if anyone needs to leave to go to graduation. I know that some people, I know some people have left already, but if anyone else has obligations, we said this was going to end at 6:30, so if you have commitments, we certainly understand that. But we did want to give you just some initial information to prompt your thinking and to have you start thinking about some issues for our discussions in July. So we're going to begin with the emerging, got to point it at the right place. We're going to begin with the emerging themes that are starting to come out of the data. There's still a lot of analysis that is going on, and there'll be more information. You'll have the full data set, which is approximately 50 pages at this point, to review prior to our discussion, but this is a high-level kind of review. So we're going to begin with where some consistency was between the School Board and your stakeholders.
As you can see, the values are well-aligned and think.
Microphone.
I'm on, can you hear me? Wasn't in it. As you can see overall, stakeholder values and the board are consistent, priorities are consistent. So a lot of the themes, it was a positive thing for us to hear that, having spoken to each board member individually and then start to look through all of this data that we're collecting, there's a lot of consistency there, which is, makes your job a whole lot easier then. Lot of pride, so the reputation, FCPS, is a lot of pride throughout from all stakeholder groups. Big, big, across all groups, across all issues, consistency is the backdrop. I don't think you'll find that surprising, so whether you're talking about curriculum or technology, whatever the issue is, consistency is the backdrop. So that is a common theme throughout, and that's programs initiatives. There's a huge value in emphasizing the whole child and developing character and developing some of these other areas, these skill sets that aren't the typical science-reading math curriculum. Stakeholders hold a lot of value in that, and they've acknowledged that there has, and they've recognized that there are this movement already, but there's a need for a whole lot more of that. They'd like to see a more balanced assessment. I think that's consistent with everyone in the room here, but teachers, even students, would like opportunities to be assessed differently and to leave feeling like they've learned differently and have been assessed and shown that they can do things in a different way. There's pretty consistent concern around teacher and administration, both in retaining people and attracting the talent and retaining it. But there's a lot of discussion around that, because the measure of, it goes beyond credentials. The measure of high-quality teaching is not just about a credentialed teacher, so it's more than just the attraction of the right people, comes in your commitment to develop in lots of other areas. And then most talked about this evening so far is concern around financial facility challenges. That's loud and clear as well. So starting off with something that resonated throughout all stakeholder groups is the perception of, you know, FCPS overall and quality. As you can see, the stakeholders overall view, their perception, opinions of the school system is very positive, so there's high agreement that you're providing high-quality education here. Overall, 83%. And when you think about that, when you look at organizational climate studies in any industry and you're looking at satisfaction ratings or service ratings, you know, above 75%, you know, you're looking at the top 25%, but you'd want to push above 80%. It's just your baseline, and then you have a starting point to push. So your baseline right now is 83%. That gives you an idea of where to start and where to move to for targeting. But that's a good spot, it's positive. It's 83% favorable rating is considered high positive. You've got the clicker?
I have to point at the right thing.
Won't go?
There we go. Could I talk about this one?
Yes.
One of the things that I think this conversation that we just had is illustrated on this particular slide. You know that you have a nationally-recognized school district, you know that your students perform well, you know that your students outperform state averages, but when you disaggregate the data, there's a couple of things that start to emerge, and you have had lots of conversation about the achievement gap, and you need to continue to work on those kinds of issues, and I'm sure that will be an emerging priority. But I do want you to recognize that you're not just outperforming the state on averages in terms of your total population. If you look at one of your strongest levels of performance, your students with disabilities outperform other students across this state by 10%. You're 10% higher than other, than the state average in terms of how well your special education population is doing on state measures. That's no small accomplishment. That's a recognition that the service and the programs and the work that you do with one of your most needy populations is demonstrating really strong overall results. And the same is true for LEP to some degree, and it breaks it down by not disadvantaged, disadvantaged. We can have much more of a discussion about this in July, but I want you to recognize that for the educational components, you're outperforming the state averages. And in reality, you're a microcosm of the state average. Given your size and your diversity, you would predict, just based on general factors, that you would be right around the state average. So the fact that you're outperforming them in many ways is a really strong indication of the quality that happens. But the one piece that I want you to consider is, when you look at the disadvantaged population in terms of poverty, which is exactly the conversation that we were having earlier with the county supervisors, that you're right around the state average. And one of the reasons for that is economics and poverty is a community issue, it's not just a school district issue. And so the conversation that started around housing issues, how populations move within the system, how you address those kinds of needs, is not just an issue that you're going to solve solely on your own by the services that you provide, it's going to be an issue that's going to be solved in some way through a county-wide approach in terms of wraparound services, how you co-locate services and think about those issues. So while I didn't know the conversation was going to go in that direction when we started or when we came today, it's interesting that your data that we've collected so far on your performance really reflects exactly what the conversation was, that you've identified as an issue, and I think the county has identified as an issue too, from what Sharon Bolova said, that housing is an issue that needs to be addressed countywide. So I just, we'll have more discussion about the particular student data in July, but I thought it was interesting that when we looked at this, it really reflected the conversation.
Yes, thanks. Okay, and here, taking a look at the Portrait of a Graduate and 21st Century Learning in general, stakeholders, we didn't specifically talk about the Portrait of a Graduate when we were collecting data, but we talked about the skills and those characteristics and the traits and some of those areas that are a little bit more challenging to understand. How do you assess that? How do you really know when a student is achieving these areas? So there's a desire for a whole lot more opportunity in there, and speaking to students, they acknowledge where and when they've had opportunities, but certainly they feel the need for more of that, they want it, teachers want it, administrators want it, so there's a real desire there to support and learn more in that area. Holistic instruction, less on standardized testing. A lot of, when you, when we asked in the open-ended questions to expand on your ratings or to add any additional information, a lot of stakeholders felt that the focus on standardized testing gets in the way, it's an obstacle and a challenge to being able to go deeper and to go in a more holistic and teach in a more holistic fashion, because they're so focused on what those standards are that have to be met. And so that was pretty clear. Technology access for all students, this again was talked about earlier tonight, it's a disproportion of access. So it's not that, you know, when we talk to teachers and to students, oh sure, it's integrated into the curriculum, you know, we integrate it when we can. The real issue is that not all kids have access to it. So where there are one-to-one initiatives, it's not across the board, and it's very disproportionate. So there is a huge push, and this is where you have to, we have to make sure as bringing you the data, that we synthesize that although if we asked a question about is it a priority to integrate it or is it being integrated, we have to bring the context of all this open-ended qualitative data to tell the real story, and that real story is that it's not in enough people's hands. So there's a real issue about expanding that access there. And then the programs and activities, getting at that whole child development, you know, that looking for more ways of, this is really the mental health, the physical, the overall wellness and well-being of students.
Just one quick aside, I would say you are somewhat unique in the fact that you have a community perception and a staff perception that standardized testing sometimes gets in the way. That's not a commonly-held view, and a desire for a more robust kind of assessment system that really assesses the kind of learning that you want to have happen is not where the majority of the nation is right now. So the fact that your community is thinking about that is, really means you're at the forefront. And I would also say that given the tight times that we have all experienced financially, the fact that your community still values the whole child aspect so deeply is really unique. And those are things that you should hold on to, because I think there's some of the things that have made a difference about why your community values the quality of education that you have going on in the system already.
Oh, we're on that side. Looking at the teaching and learning environment overall, this is where you're going to get to some of the climate, the workplace environment satisfactions. In this particular case, looking at students, and we asked them on the survey, as you know, their agreement with how happy they were with their school, and 60% of the students agree that they're happy. That's an area for focus, and we can talk more about that in July. That's a baseline measure that obviously you're going to want to work on that. The context of, you know, when students, we asked for, to expand on it, a lot of discussion around. around feeling pressure to compete. This was heard openly in focus groups. It was recorded in the open-ended information on the survey. A lot of stress, a lot of competition, a lot of pressure that they have to be the best and nothing but AP packing and, you know, top-of-the-line marks are, just doesn't cut it. Seventy-four percent of your employees agree that FCPS is a great place to work, and you know, you should feel good about that. I mean, seventy-four percent of your employees, when you think about that question, there's a lot of things that people consider in their mind, very rapid-fire. Well, do I like working here? Is this a great place to work? And there's a whole lot of things that your mind processes very quickly about whether or not you think it's a great place to work. In July, when we can dig a little deeper into the data, we can sort of look at some of the other factors that might impact that sort of question and give you an idea of how do we increase that. This is a good baseline measure. Certainly, you'd want to push that over eighty percent. But it's a good baseline measure and focus on that because that's going to lead to your retention. That's going to, you know, lead to a lot of other workplace and personnel-related issues. Overall, there's a desire for fewer initiatives, greater focus, consistency in the allocation of resources, really optimizing the resources, and not just that there's this spread of, you know, resources regardless of the need. They really talked a lot about, there's a lot of input about the need to be able to allocate greater funds or resources where it's needed rather than just this equity across in some cases. And a lot of talk about breadth versus depth. So, and this came from students, it came from teachers, administrators, that the coursework and the curriculum and the programs are so broad-based. It's kind of, you know, like survey courses. You learn a little bit about so much, but there's no opportunity to dive a little bit deeper and really allow students to think a little bit more critically and analytically and develop some of these higher-order thinking skills. The pace, even parents talked about the pace of curriculum, which was unusual for me. In a community, when we're in focus groups, to hear parents talk about curriculum pacing is not normal. So I was surprised. One, that they knew what that even meant, right? They talked about the curriculum pacing being so rapid that they don't feel their kids are learning the depth. So, you know, that's an area we can talk a little bit more about. And the chart on the right gives you just some of the response, the favorable response rates of agreement about whether or not you're making research-based decisions, what's your follow-through like on initiatives, and then effective communication, specifically about implementation, you know, of initiatives.
And just to use this as a highlight for what you want to think about in July. So the issue is overall employee satisfaction with the Fairfax County Public Schools. Well, it's easy to say we want to improve satisfaction. The question then becomes, what is it that you need to do to improve satisfaction? So one of the things that you'll have in the data that will be presented are the items from the survey that are most highly correlated with overall satisfaction. So you can look at those items as the top five items that are correlated to overall satisfaction and say, if we made a difference in two or three of these, would we improve overall satisfaction? And that's part of the conversation that we'll have in July. So if you look at this one, when you talk about FCPS makes research-based decisions, follows through on initiatives, and communicates plans for implementing initiatives, those items are correlated with satisfaction, and you can see that some of those items are not particularly strong, which might account for why twenty-six percent of your employees are not highly satisfied. So making a difference in some of those things by changing your approach to those particular items may improve that overall satisfaction. And that's part of the conversation that we'll have in July, based on the data that you will receive beforehand, to see what those drivers are in those various areas.
Okay, under finance and operations, some of what's emerging, again, nothing that we haven't spoken about, is a challenge of budgetary increases that aren't matching your needs and your enrollment and the changes in your population. We don't need to say anymore about that now because enough's been said tonight, but a lot of work there in July. Capital projects, maintenance, technologies that are necessary, same thing. And then improved communication. That was a very common theme that ran deep across and within clusters, that there is a disconnect between the district level, the division level, and the buildings. They don't feel that there's a, it goes from alignment to initiatives to communication to understanding how goals are related between and within. So communication is going to be a key piece for you to focus on.
The next steps, when we talk about where we're going to be going, I've shared this a little bit in terms of the July conversation of reviewing all the information that we've gathered in a format that will hopefully help you make some decisions that are actionable about what goals or priorities and strategies do you want to pursue. And so we'll have that. But the other thing that we're going to talk about, I'm going to do this really briefly so we stay under the fifteen-minute cap, is mission, vision, and guiding principles because we will want to review those and talk about those. I know you've had some conversation with them before. For the most part, your community agrees with your mission. When you look at-
Go to the next one, yeah, two more.
That's your mission statement. There you go. For the most part, your community, employees, parents agree with the overall mission. You may wish to tweak it. We may wish to have some discussion about it. But the piece where you really may want to think about your vision is, you have a vision statement, which is five different categories, I think, and then an elaboration under each one of them. It's not really a vision, most vision statements are things that you walk away with, with an understanding of what that means.
It's an aspiration, yeah.
You can't walk away from the conversation with your vision statement to say where, what does your preferred future look like in a succinct kind of way? Now, you may want it as a description, which may be perfectly fine, but you may also, we also may spend some time talking about that vision to say, is there some way to crystallize that for your employees and your community to help define that vision moving forward? And then the last one, there's a slide in there that talks about what a vision statement is. The last one is your guiding principles. For the most part, there was strong agreement about your guiding principles. We'll have that kind of conversation. The only change that we thought was really necessary is to update the one that's in the box, to have it reflect the categories in your Portrait of a Graduate. And even this one has changed slightly because you've revised the last column of the Portrait of a Graduate, and it, I know it's still an evolving process. But we do think that you want to have your belief statements reflect those areas in the Portrait of a Graduate that you've identified as priorities. So, we're going to spend time on the eighteenth and the nineteenth. We're meeting from three o'clock till seven o'clock on Friday evening, and then Saturday morning, however long it takes to work through that. On Friday evening, we will want to go through the information for an hour, hour and a half of the data report that you will receive beforehand, and you will have it at least ten days to two weeks-
July, I think we've targeted.
Before you're going to review it, so you'll have a chance, or before we're going to discuss it, so you'll have a chance to review it. We'll talk about that, answer any questions about the data that you may have, and then move into a conversation around mission, vision, guiding, our guiding principles. If there's changes that are necessary, hopefully begin that conversation Friday, begin the discussion around goals possibly. And on Saturday, hopefully, we can generate the ideas that you want to have on the table and at least start to get some of them prioritized and discussed as to what are the emerging strategies and goals that you think as a board are most important to move forward. Having worked with you before, I know that that may be a challenge.
I'm confident we'll do it. We'll be done.
But I have also seen you work really well on coming together to make some of those decisions, and I would be prepared for the fact that you need to think about what those issues are, but you also need to be prepared for, how do we make this a plan that identifies the real priorities? You can't do everything for everyone in this document. You can keep those things in mind. I'm not saying you shouldn't pay attention to them, but one of the things your staff has been asking for, I think the communication issue is asking for, is how do you clearly define where you want this organization going over the next two, three, four, or five years?
And that timeline's going to be key. Once you've agreed on the set of priorities underneath the goal areas, then how are you going to spread that out? Because you can't do it all in one year. Your stakeholders are telling you, there's too much going on now, so how are you going to spread that out? And that's part of how you prioritize and commit to the resources and the funding and the time.
And then I think we're going to spend a little bit of time, couple of hours in the afternoon, Kathy, talking about the board's self-evaluation.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Dr. Jimetro and Dr. Sinanik. I know that I promised you to release you by six-thirty. We have already almost twenty minutes beyond my promised time. You think you can give us another ten minutes?
Sure.
Or is that going to hamper your travel?
Nope, we're fine.
Ten more minutes, ten more. I know I had Mrs. Shorich and Mrs. McLaughlin and Mrs. Strauss. That would probably be it. Mrs. Shorich?
Just real quickly, on the page where we had the, oh, gosh, the observations by the community, I'm sorry. I passed it. On the, on the technology gap, okay, so where it says Twenty-First Century Learning, I think it's, I don't know what page it is. So it says Global Findings, Twenty-First Century Learning at the top. The third bullet says need to expand equity and technology access for all students. And I'm wondering, is that an anecdotal observation that was collected? Because when I hear that six percent of people in the county don't have access, you know, I don't know how much that means in terms of our students. And we keep talking about that, and yet I don't know how quantifiable that is. Like, is that a feeling? Or is that, you know, an, I mean, you know, that, it's something that I think we get into the habit of saying, but I don't know if there is, you know, something that proves beyond that. And then just, two other quick things. The seventy-four percent agree it's a great place to work. How does that compare? I mean, is that good? I don't know what, that's a number, and that's a statistic, but it's in a vacuum. I don't know what that means in terms of other districts, high-performing districts, low-perform, I don't know. And the disconnect between the buildings, you know, I'm assuming that means like a campus and the division, was there any common theme there? I mean, I can clearly see on the agreement on initiative that, you know, whether we follow through with initiatives or effectively communicate, that seems to be a huge drop-off. And so I don't know if that's what the central theme was around, so just three quick little thingies.
Sure. So, the response to the first one is, it's qualitative data. So it is not anecdotal. It is qualitative, which is not intended to be quantified, so it's a difficult thing what you're asking for because it's a qualitative. But I can tell you that the rigor behind how the qualitative data is coded is that it has to emerge as a theme, and they're independently coded by two independent coders and a third, if there's any discrepancy, to resolve it. So it emerged enough times in the qualitative survey data and focus group data that it warranted being a theme. So it's not anecdotal. It's across different stakeholder groups, across different forms of data collection. Okay?
I want, and the seventy-four, we'll get a sense. Just a ballpark response to that is seventy-four percent is good, but certainly not great.
Yeah, you'd want to push for eighty percent.
Okay. And I'm not sure I understand the disconnect between the building.
There was a theme presented that there seems to be a disconnect between buildings. Right. And again, that is definitely regarding the initiatives. There was a lot of discussion and survey, open-ended, that when, sticking with initiatives, when initiatives are enrolled, that there is no clear communication, that when it hits the buildings, it's there, but they don't know why, what was the purpose of it, what are we trying to, what is our point, what are we trying to achieve with this? It's just suddenly here, you have to do this. So communication in that respect.
Okay, and Mrs. McLaughlin?
Two things. First, as someone who has teenagers in our public schools, three of them, I have to say the slide where it showed only sixty percent of our children agree that they're happy in their school, that saddened me. And I, I know our superintendent, I know our board is committed to trying to better understand that. To me, that was just an absolutely powerful number because I hear it anecdotally, but I really look forward to getting a better sense of what's affecting that number because we are a great school system, but that number's telling me something's not quite happening in our intention in the way we're creating an environment, a learning environment for them. And as we talked about earlier, to solve a problem, you have to identify, you know, what the actual problem is. So that's just a number, and then if we can get underneath it and understand what it might be, then hopefully we'll have some wonderful solutions to move forward on that. So I want to thank you for highlighting that because I think it's given me a lot to think about. The second thing is that, Hank, I was really drawn by what you said, in terms of what the purpose of this whole strategic plan is about. And I'm trying to remain very optimistic about what we're about to embark on because I do understand a strategic plan is that you hope to set and identify goals, you know, what are going to be your priorities. But I think where it's giving me some pause that maybe you could just highlight a little bit and we'll talk about in July, is that we do still have a responsibility to operate and continue our existing responsibilities in terms of delivering a quality education K-12. And so I agree with the conversations we've had in the future, I mean, conversations we had in the past, that we can't keep trying to take on new things. But could you just maybe speak a little bit more about how this will look different? Because the idea of having to say no, saying no to new initiatives versus saying no to addressing existing service problems, I see as differently, and I wanted to know if I'm, if that's the case. Because you can't say no to an existing problem, right?
Yeah, I don't think the issue is saying no to a problem. I think the issue is identifying the priorities of the organization moving forward. So if you take that Portrait of a Graduate and you say, there's approximately fifteen items, maybe eighteen items on that, that are your priorities for what students should be able to accomplish, where is it that you should be spending your time, your money, your energy as an organization to accomplish those things? And, you know, there's some emerging themes here, that things, things that people have said that they, that are important. But, and so you have to factor those kinds of things in. But for instance, you spend a lot of time and energy on your current twelve OMs. OEs. Is that, are those things really driving the information and what you want to be doing to move the system forward? If they are, by all means, spend the time there. If they're not, stop spending administrative and organizational time collecting data and managing that information and replace it with the things that relate back to the priorities that you have identified. So when I, when I say identifying priorities, I'm not saying that you don't want to be responsive to your stakeholders, you don't want to be responsive to issues that arise. But at the same time, you want to use your resources of time, money, and energy judiciously on your priorities. And so the conversation about those priorities are, once you've established them, you know, some of those OE reports that you do take hundreds of man-hours to collect that data. If that data means something to you as a board and to the organization to move the organization forward, by all means, continue to do it. If you're just doing it because you've done it for the last seven or eight years and it's not adding value to the work that you're doing, that's maybe something you could stop doing and spending time on in terms of the time that it takes to generate that information and reallocate that time someplace else. And I think that's one of the messages from your staff. It's not that they don't want to work on new initiatives to improve the quality of education, but they want to do it well. They want to do it thoughtfully. They want to have the time to implement it. And so maybe picking the two or three priorities for the year rather than the five or six and giving them enough lead time to prepare for it, to know that this is on the horizon next year and to be thinking about it, those are the kinds of things that the strategic plan should help you identify to improve your overall approach.
And that just actually cut across a couple of those points, the communication, the allocation, and the disproportionality. Because if it's, whatever the initiative is, it should make the decisions for everyone in this room a whole lot easier. Going back to, I think Jeff maybe had mentioned it, he's looking forward to how it's going to be tied back to the initiatives. That's the key piece of the strategic plan. It should be the framework for how you make decisions and when you say yes and no. If you're, what you should do when you're approached is look back and reflect back and say, is this in alignment with what we've committed? And if it isn't, you may say no, or maybe, or maybe some adaptation of it. But that's key. And the second part is communication, clear and advanced. And the second part is communication, clear, clear and advanced. Can't always do that if it's a crisis or some external variable comes in that you, you know, legislation requires you a mandate. But where you can, you need to put emphasis on communicating sooner and more thoroughly. And then seeing it out, the commitment to the initiatives. A lot of stakeholders said, you know, it was a race to see who can get the money to do it, or the funds, or it ran out real quick because if two school buildings were involved in the committee, they got it and the resources, but when other, others heard about it, well the resources are all gone, we can't go beyond these two buildings that this is going on in. So it's some of that, some of the, that's the inconsistency piece.
Thank you. That, that's great. And with regard to the OEs, I could not have captured it more beautifully than you did. So thank you, and I hope you'll lead us toward more productive work.
Thank you. And Mrs. Strauss is the last one.
Okay, Ian, obviously, we're all very concerned about the neediness of, the growing neediness of a larger and larger percentage of our population. Nationwide, we're watching a lot of public schools become the, the schooling of the last resort. And we don't want that to happen here. We want all of our kids to be well-served, the 35% who are in poverty and then the 65, 70% that are not. And I guess when you were doing your, all your areas, focus groups, did you talk to any people who, who have chosen not to be in the public schools? And I don't know if that's something that we need to worry about because as, as, as we watch the economy and sort of the 1% get, or the 1%, and we have a lot of those folks here, very powerful people in industry, they want, you know, they want to bring the big companies here. We have to make sure that those guys are supporting our public schools, not just in the abstract because it's, looks good. But we need to be good enough to educate their children. Because over time, parents vote with their feet and then we lose the political will to maintain the aspect of being a common school, where we really provide good programs for all children because it is good for all children. And is there, is that something we should be worried about here? Did you get any sense of that?
I don't, I don't think we targeted that particular group of people to invite them in, but if that's one of the things that we need to find out, that maybe one of the strategies or the initiatives that emerges to find out why people may choose to leave Fairfax.
Right, because-
I, I would have a hunch, having worked in many systems where that is a huge problem, and there are many systems where there's a huge problem. Your reputation and the quality that you provide is, that's a really minor issue here. But I could be wrong about that.
But we wouldn't want to slip.
Right, exactly.
Because once you, you began what we call urbanize, it's very hard to get it back. And then nobody wants to pay anything to help. It's, we're helping all the kids on the other side of the tracks, you know, not us. And that's, that's just awful for a public school.
Okay, thank you. With that, this works actually is your John. We'll see you again in July.
Thank you.
And Dan forgot his birthday cake, so if anyone wants to eat.